Thirty.
And.
Whatever note that was, yes.
But.
I just said whatever note that was. I'm not.
Okay, and I called this December meeting of the December second work session of the Alamo County School Board to order. I welcome all of those who are listening to us by Zoom on the county's website. And we will now have a moment of silence. As our protocol dictates, we will read this statement into our minutes for tonight. The minutes of this meeting should reflect that this meeting is being held electronically pursuant to Virginia State law and Alamo County ordinance. Because the COVID nineteen pandemic makes it impracticable and unsafe to assemble a quorum physically in a single location. The meeting is being communicated to the public electronically through Zoom and streamed live on the Alamo County Public Schools website. And public comment may be offered through the Zoom waiting room feature in accordance with the school board's protocol or by written submission. And now introducing the members of our board, Dr. Kate Acuff.
Kate Acuff, Jack Jewett District.
Mr. John O'Alcaro.
John O'Alcaro at large.
Ms. Katrina Carlson.
Katrina Carlson, Ryo District.
Ms. Judy Lee.
Judy Lee, Rayvanna District.
Mr. Dave Olberg.
Dave Olberg, Whitehall Magisterial District.
Ms. Ellen Osborne.
Ellen Osborne, Scottsville District.
I'm Graham Page, Samuel Miller District, and Mr. David Antrobius.
Thank you for having me.
Okay, David is our student rep. And also our alternate rep. I don't think is here tonight, but this is his last day to serve along with David Stu. We'll acknowledge Davidson a little bit. But next we need a motion to accept or approve rather the agenda for tonight's meeting.
I move that we approve the agenda.
Second.
Move by Ms. Dale Caro, second by Ms. Lee, that we approve the agenda for tonight. Ms. Johnston, could you please call the role?
Mr. Alcaro.
Yes.
Ms. Lee. Yes. Dr. Acuff.
Yes.
Ms. Osborne.
Yes.
Mr. Over.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Mr. Page.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Mr. Page, it looks like our other alternate student rep is coming into the meeting right now.
Okay, thank you. We need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Move by Mr. Alcaro, second by Mr. Over, that we approve the consent agenda. Any discussion on the motion?
I just wanted to thank Dr. McLaughlin for adding the information that I requested last time to the COVID update. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lee. Or Ms. Johnston.
Ms. Lee. Yes. Dr. Acuff.
Yes.
Ms. Osborne.
Yes.
Mr. Over.
Yes.
Ms. Carlson.
Yes.
Mr. Alcaro.
Yes.
Mr. Page.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Ms. Johnston. And tonight we do have a second or alternate student rep, Ms. Alexander Hild. Alex, would you like to introduce yourself to the board and tell us maybe a little bit about you? We are sorry that you missed to last the meeting on December the second. But please introduce yourself and tell us a little about yourself.
Yeah, sorry about that. I was there's a bit of a personal emergency. Sorry I wasn't able to attend, but. I'm Alexander Hild. I'm a senior at Weston Memorial High School, been going there for the last four years now. Yeah, I don't really have much to say. By far favorite class over there is definitely shop. That's sort of my my wheelhouse, but I'm I'm a. Yeah, sorry, not much to say.
Okay, thank you very much. We're really pleased to have you with us tonight, Alex.
Great, I'm glad to be here.
Serving as a rep, even though you didn't get a chance to attend any meetings because all of our people who were actual people were didn't have any problems this year, this semester, but thank you for being the rep.
Sorry I was late. I was having some connection issues, so it was taking me a while to get in here.
Okay, no problem. We have announcements about Dr. Haas.
Good evening, everyone, and Alexander, welcome to the board. One thing you and I already have in common is that when I was in high school, my favorite class was shop as well. So I totally understand why why you enjoy the shop class. Good to see you.
Good to see you too.
Yes, sir. And if anything I can do for you, please let me know. Remember, as a board member, I work for you. And as a student, I work for you too, of course. Um, so a couple of quick announcements. First, we have several of our outstanding principals here tonight. And if those of you joining us tonight, if you wouldn't mind just turning on your cameras so the board members can see you. It's always good to see your faces. We have Cassandra Blunt, principal at Burley Middle School, Jason Crutchfield, principal of Brownsville, Amy Morris, principal of Broadus Wood Elementary School, Maureen Jensen, who is principal at Stony Point, Cita Delorean from Murray Elementary School, and also Rick Vahovak, principal at Monticello High School. You all do outstanding work, and I'm so glad you could be here for a little bit tonight just to kind of listen in on the conversation that the board is having. So thank you so much. I do want to give a shout out and thank Nancy McCowan, principal at Red Hill Elementary School for having me to visit today. I had the pleasure of visiting the combined kindergarten and first grade class. Teachers are Chris Marshall, Beth Cavunas, and Christina Shute, but I really had a great time with the students. And they're doing an outstanding job. And the second class that I visited was the fourth and fifth grade class with Sarah Rogers and Emma Gunter. And like I said, I really was very impressed with the school today, a lot of good things going on and high quality teaching and learning. So I think that's it, Mr. Page. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Haas. And we do welcome Ms. Blunt, Mr. Crutchfield, Ms. Morris, Ms. Jensen, Ms. Delaria, and Mr. Vahovak to our meeting tonight. We are so glad to have you all with us, and we really appreciate everything that you do for the students here in Alamo County. So thank you all for being with us. And tonight, as I mentioned before, is David's last night to serve as our student rep on the board. David, we really appreciate everything that you've been doing on the board since you started serving about a month or two ago. We appreciate all of the contributions that you've made, and especially hearing your point of view as a student doing our discussions. We wish the best for you as you continue this year and then as you continue your education upon graduation from Monticello. A formal acknowledgement of your contributions to the board will be sent to you at a later date. So again, we really appreciate appreciate everything that you've done, all of your contributions. And you have any statement you would like to make to us, not putting you on the spot or anything?
Yeah, absolutely. Well, firstly, I'd like to say thank you again. I appreciate being offered the opportunity to come onto the board. And from the contributions I made, maybe a bit fewer than I would have liked, but I'm glad I could have gotten some help. And I think overall, I've understood a lot more about how the county works and just what's happening in Charlottesville. It's crazy the amount of work that you guys put in to managing and making the county work. And so it's been a great experience for me, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Okay, thank you so much, David. Tonight, we do not have any public comment. So we are now ready for our work session on the budget, our first work session for this year's budget. And Ms. Kumazawa is going to lead off this and present this portion of our work session. So Maya, please come forward.
Good evening, school board members. I'm Maya Kumazawa, Director of Budget and Planning, and I am joined tonight by Dr. Claire Kaiser, Mr. Dan Redding, and Mr. Brody Downs, who will be presenting the work session portion of this evening's agenda. The purpose for this evening is to gather input to further the development of the fiscal year twenty-three funding requests, which will incorporate fiscal year twenty-two mid-year revisions. In previous years, you all have requested that you are informed and involved a little bit earlier in the budget development process. So this is our attempt to do that among the many other issues and priorities that are on your plate. So thank you for your time. On December first, the Board of Supervisors approved amending the current year fiscal year twenty-two budget to incorporate an updated revenue projection and allocating it to county government, school operations, and capital and debt service based on a shared allocation of local tax revenues. The revenue update equals twenty point three million dollars in local state and transfer avenues, of which we will receive ten point three million dollars by formula. Staff will provide preliminary recommendations for the use of these funds. The work session will also focus on compensation strategies to ensure alignment with the strategic plan and its success measures. Preliminary recommendations will be made to address workforce stabilization efforts, both in the short and long term. And the school board will have some time in breakout rooms to digest the information and provide direction to staff for both the current year and for the next fiscal year. The items that will be presented this evening are in direct alignment with the third goal of our strategic plan, learning for all. A C P S will attract, develop, and retain the highest quality staff, develop sustainable and modern facilities, infrastructure, and equipment, and distribute all resources in an equitable equitable manner to transform learning experiences and opportunities. I will now walk us through the first item on the agenda, and we plan on pausing after each section to address any questions that you may have. As part of Alamo County's financial strategy during this pandemic, they have been thoroughly reviewing and revising local revenue projections as a local economy has seen significant and positive shifts. These are some slides that I borrowed from a presentation to the Board of Supervisors to show what these shifts are. The fourth quarter of FY twenty, which represents the beginning of the pandemic, showed no growth, as you might have imagined. This was significant in FY twenty because almost half of a fiscal year's revenues are collected during the last quarter. In the last year, fiscal year twenty-one, the fourth quarter saw a seven percent increase in general fund revenues, indicating a strong turnaround in the economy. If you drill down into some of the shared revenues, such as sales tax, meals, and transient occupancy taxes, and jump forward to the first quarter of the current fiscal year, you can see how much higher revenue collections have been when compared to prior years. This is represented by the red dot in the upper left corner. Not only are these revenues higher than they were during the pandemic, they are significantly higher than pre-pandemic years. These unpredicted shifts in the revenues for the current year have led to revised revenue projections and increased allocations for our capital program, for the school division, and for county government operations. Last week, the Board of Supervisors approved seven point eight million dollars in new expenditures, including a six percent pay increase for their employees and a one-time transfer to the C I P of four point three million dollars. As a reminder to you and the public, the Capital Improvement Program, or C I P, is a joint program between the county and the school division, and revenues in this program are shared in addition to the allocation that's provided for school operations. The strategy that the Board of Supervisors approved is a sound one, since we are halfway through the fiscal year. Any recurring costs that are added halfway through the current year will approximately double in fiscal year twenty-three to account for a full year of operating costs. By allocating a significant portion of the revenues into one-time items, such as a transfer to the C I P, those items would be available, those funds would be available in FY twenty-three to support ongoing costs, for example, of their mid-year salary increase. You all will have a chance to discuss this during our work session some more on compensation tonight. The allocation to the school division is ten point three million dollars. This is a ten point three million dollar adjustment to our baseline operating budget. In mirroring the strategy that the Board of Supervisors approved, we recommend that these funds be used first for immediate workforce stabilization needs. These are items that cannot wait until the next fiscal year to ensure that we're fully meeting the needs of our students and staff and keeping in line with our strategic plan. After meeting urgent and ongoing needs, we recommend using the remainder of the funds for one-time expenditures. Some examples of what this may be are listed on this slide. The transfer to the C I P is very beneficial to A C P S, as you are aware. The list of capital projects remains long and largely unfunded. More funding into the C I P would better ensure more funding for our capital needs. Other one-time capital needs that are presented here are increases in the cost of our computer and technology replacement funds, one-time transfers to vehicle replacement, which may include the purchase of electric school buses, procurement for human resources information system as part of the H R redesign, and a study of middle school capacity as recommended by the Long Range Planning Advisory Committee. I just want to take an extra minute to talk about the transfer to the C I P that we're proposing. During the fiscal year twenty-one fourth quarter report, we provided information about our year-end fund balances of about fifteen million dollars. We have of that, we have budgeted about six point six million for the current year. Per policy, the school division may only retain a certain level of fund balance. That's a percentage of our total budget. This represents about four point three million dollars that can be kept. The remainder would transfer back to the C I P. Separate from this four point three million dollar transfer to the C I P, we're proposing an additional transfer of the mid-year revenue adjustment back to the C I P, similarly to what local government has done. We just wanted to make sure that this piece of it was transparent, and as I mentioned, our C I P needs are not insignificant, and these transfers would be very beneficial. I will pause now for any questions you have about the current year's provision.
Maya, just to clarify, what you had said about the fifteen point two was that it was four point three to be retained, four point three to go to C I P, and then the balance for the current year. And so this is not addressed, this is separate from what we're about to talk about. Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
This was just to provide a snapshot of funds that were already being transferred. All right, and I can come back to this because every section, as you can see, will be connected. So I'm now going to switch gears into the budget development process for FY twenty-three. I wanted to start with how decisions made in the current year will impact our discussion for next year. On this chart, you can see these, we start with FY twenty-two adopted revenues, and then the first set of revisions that were appropriated right after the beginning of the fiscal year. And then the current set of revisions in orange here of the ten point three million dollars. These revisions, as I mentioned, will be built into the base formula with an additional projected increase of five point eight million dollars starting July first, which is a three point eight percent forecasted increase. Hypothetically, if we didn't spend the full ten point three million dollars in the current year, or if we dedicated it purely to one-time items, we would have about sixteen million dollars in available funding to address next year's needs, both in nondiscretionary changes and new proposals. However, if you all approve adding to recurring expenditures, such as a mid-year pay adjustment, that would reduce the overall unallocated portion for FY twenty-three. While local revenues make up about seventy percent of our total revenues for the school fund, state revenues also largely contribute to the remainder of the budget. Here's what we know so far. Similar to local tax collections, sales tax collections at the state level have also been higher than what we budgeted. Secondly, our local composite index, or L C I, or ability to pay, has decreased slightly. This chart shows the slight decline. The L C I will be used to calculate certain state revenues, and a lower L C I results in higher payments by formula. However, we haven't made any forecasts in overall state revenues because there are some other large unknowns, such as the impact of our declining enrollment. State funding formulas are also driven by enrollment numbers. Since we've seen a significant decline in enrollment, this may impact us negatively next year. During the current biennium, we're being held harmless for this enrollment loss with a value of over two million dollars in just the current year. In addition, while we anticipate receiving the details of the governor's proposed budget in the next week or two, the dependability of the final adopted state budget being close to what's originally proposed in this month, that dependability decreases with a change in political leadership in the middle of this process. As I mentioned earlier, our projected enrollment will impact state revenues we receive by formula. But not only will our revenues be impacted, we budget our expenditures according to the enrollment projection. So here's a proposed projection for this next school year. I thought it'd be helpful to show the past ten years in relation to where we are now. The solid blue line shows our actual K twelve enrollment levels, and the dotted blue line shows our projection for those years. You can see that growth levels from year to year are generally driven by the growth trends in previous years. For twenty twenty twenty-one, we projected a very large increase due to the very large increases we saw in the previous few years. This was also the fall in which we saw the largest decline in actual enrollment due to the pandemic. For the twenty-one twenty-two school year, we adjusted accordingly and lowered our projection. But you can see the students did not return to the level that we projected. For twenty-two twenty-three, you can see we are further decreasing the projection from the previous projection, while at the same time assuming an increase in actual number of students when compared to this year. The projection was developed using historical cohort progression ratios and birth data and applying the most aggressive growth assumptions while not artificially adding students back. This projection of thirteen thousand six hundred and forty-eight K twelve students closely aligns with the projection that Weldon Cooper has provided to us. Finally, I want to focus on some considerations with regards to our expenditures for FY twenty-three. We anticipate investing largely into workforce stabilization efforts, those implemented both this year as well as new ones for next year. Preliminary recommendations and items for workforce stabilization considerations will be presented in the next section. As always, a large portion of funds will be dedicated towards nondiscretionary items such as healthcare costs, retirement costs, and other contractual obligations. The expenditures in this category will keep service levels constant. We anticipate that for healthcare costs, the employer contribution will increase significantly in the next fiscal year. Employee contributions will not increase as we head into the new calendar year. While not final, we're currently anticipating that B R S rates may decrease, and we hope that this will offset a portion of the rising healthcare costs. Another large piece of the expenditures are enrollment and staffing assumptions. As you're aware, we've added a significant number of F T Es this year using one-time funding to reduce class sizes and to address mental health needs in our schools. We'd like to consider keeping our services and class sizes intact as we move into the next year, whether we fund it through our operating budget or other funding. Budgeting for contingencies will also be important. As the enrollment projection slide has shown, that nothing is certain, and we cannot accurately predict future enrollment during these times. Finally, I also wanted to remind the board that we continue to have frozen and unfunded portions of the budget that were cut at the beginning of the pandemic. This leads me into the small portion of new items we typically reserve during a robust budget year. In the early fall, we engage with students and staff at the school level to begin brainstorming budget requests using our existing workplace condition surveys and school condition surveys as a starting point. In October, we brought representatives from each school together as part of a central forum to synthesize these ideas. Just today, the superintendent released a budget survey to invite the entire community as a part of this process. Our plan is to use this data to help inform the proposals for the FY twenty-three draft funding request. I will pause here again before we move into the compensation discussion. Are there any questions about the budget before we move?
Just Maya, how recently were the population figures from Cooper? How? How current is that data?
I'm. Probably a month or two. It was from this fall, yes. We had been working with them during these pandemic years to ensure we weren't way off in our assumptions when compared to them. All right, I will hand this presentation over to Dr. Kaiser.
Thank you, Ms. Kumazawa. Good evening, board members. I'm Claire Kaiser, Assistant Superintendent. And I am here tonight with Dan Redding, our Human Resources Director, and Brody Downs, our Assistant Director of Human Resources, to talk a little bit more about compensation. What we will do tonight is we will take a look at a different, a couple of different ways to look at compensation. We'll talk about our current process and some of the challenges that we are currently facing. We'll make some recommendations. We will also share with the board some information regarding the market study that the board asked us to do and as far as strategies go, and then we'll take a comparison look at some various markets. And we'll do all of that before you all have the opportunity to break into groups as part of our work session to further discuss this. So the first thing that we always think about is the alignment of the work that we do with the goals that we have. And as Ms. Kumazawa said, you know, this this goal three, that equitable and transformative resources really very much aligns with the work that we do in human resources and in supporting our school division employees. That first objective of attracting, developing, and retaining the highest quality staff is something that we hold dear, and it's very key in the decisions that we make. We have the first strategy related to objective one, that Alamo County Public Schools will implement a total compensation structure that makes us highly competitive compared to other employers. That, as our first strategy, really highlights the importance of compensation. And as we have shared throughout other sessions with the board, we, for the first time in a number of years, we have been very much hit by the national shortages, both in teachers and other employees. And and so this piece around compensation this year is probably more vital than ever. As we look into that first strategy, we do have several success measures that do directly align with compensation and the outcomes that that entails. We obviously would like to increase the year-over-year number of highly qualified candidates applying to positions. We'd like to decrease the number of unfilled positions year-over-year, and we want to make sure that salary is not identified as a reason for departure from the division. So what we're going to do next is Mr. Downs is going to talk a little bit, I'm sorry, Mr. Redding is going to talk a little bit about the current state of the workforce.
All right. Thank you so much, Dr. Kaiser, and good evening, board members. So we are, we want to share some information with you about some of the metrics that we're looking to that lead that lead us to make some of our recommendations this evening. If we could go to the next slide, thank you. It's showing some of our current challenges based on different employee groups. When we look at some of our exit data, some of what we're learning related to teacher turnover, twenty, more than twenty-seven percent of our teachers who left us last year indicated pay as one of their top reasons for leaving, either leaving Albemarle or leaving the profession. We know this year, teachers are often asked to cover classes. We have the substitute incentive pay, where we are compensating teachers and TAs who are covering unfilled substitute jobs, and that helps. But the continual time missed with planning and the added demands that that puts on our teachers does take a toll. This year, as Dr. Kaiser mentioned, we are seeing the national teacher shortage with a decline in applicants overall, a little more than a hundred and forty fewer applicants for more positions that we had open this year. So that is, that is arriving, and we did have unfilled positions at the beginning of the school year. When we look at our classified staff, like teachers, pay was one of the top reasons that our classified staff indicated for leaving Albemarle County Schools. Thirty-one percent said it was the top reason. Our classified retention rate, meaning they're returning year after year, has dropped to seventy-six point four percent. So while it was increasing, it has turned and it has begun to decline. That is the lowest in the last five years. Our ability to compete with the private sector in some of the areas, especially trades, is proving especially challenging and want to highlight some of those positions, specifically electricians and our HVAC mechanics, that those highly skilled positions have been particularly challenging for us to hire this year. We've had an electrician position open and advertised since September, and we recently advertised a couple weeks ago an HVAC mechanic position. And at this time, we're not finding in the applicant pool the people we want to bring on board. And what we're hearing is that commercial contractors are starting at a higher rate, sometimes upwards of thirty dollars an hour, with ample to extensive amounts of overtime available. Our pay range in these skilled trades starts at twenty dollars an hour. So we need to really think about and look at that and look at who we are considering our competitive market in those areas. Another data point with classified staff, we have eighteen current openings posted, and they've been open for a month or more than a month. So we're not seeing the fill time. That wait to fill is longer than it's been in quite some time. Finally, for our substitutes, our substitute teachers, our fill rate for substitute jobs has been under fifty percent for about a month now. We have roughly seventy-five active substitutes, meaning they're frequently taking jobs in various buildings. We do have substitutes who are going to the same building over and over. It's in their neighborhood. They have connections there, or children there, and we value their work tremendously. They're an incredible support for us, but that pool for us has dwindled. Our current pay is ninety-seven dollars a day for a substitute teacher. Recently, the city of Charlottesville schools increased their hourly rate for subs to twenty dollars an hour, which translates to a hundred and forty dollars a day. We recently surveyed our neighboring jurisdictions and actually Green and Fluvana County have increased their daily substitute rate to a hundred dollars a day. So we are falling behind in that metric. And with that, I'd like to go ahead and, I'm sorry, if we could go back one, I also want to mention within classified staff, we are looking also at our school nurses. We want to be very mindful of difficulties recruiting them for this year and looking at the marketplace for our school nurses. So we're really watching some of those specific areas within our classified staff. And now Mr. Downs will take it over and talk about our annual compensation process.
Thank you, Mr. Redding. It's good to see everybody this evening. Thanks for, thanks for having us. It's probably best and most helpful to briefly revisit the adopted compensation strategy that occurs on an annual basis. Our annual compensation process is the primary means for which the ACPS measures the school division's market competitiveness. And our adopted market is comprised of nearly thirty localities all in Virginia. In analyzing the market each year, we do focus primarily on two aspects of our compensation structure, our classified employees' pay grades and our teacher step scales. The school board's total compensation strategy is to target classified employee salaries at a hundred percent of our adopted competitive market's median. The strategy for teacher salaries has been to target the top quartile. So shifting to the current fiscal year's efforts, after serving the adopted market, our findings indicated that the median increase was a five percent, was a five percent increase. If you go to the next slide, please. So here you see a graph showing the last three years increases, and this is a graph showing the master's degree scale for our teachers. Right to left represents the increased steps in the teacher scale, and you'll see the board-approved increases to compensation to the last three years. Unfortunately, an apology is that that two percent for twenty to twenty-one is actually an error. It should be zero. And we, it was a zero. It was proposed to be two percent, but it actually became zero in response to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. But also of importance to note is that our health insurance premiums for employees did not increase in any of the last three years. If you go to the next slide, please. So while the next few slides will focus on the current fiscal year, this slide in particular focuses on the current fiscal year for our classified staff. So subsequent to five percent market median research completed, the ACPS did recommend and approve a four percent increase for all eligible employees and increased the minimum pay rate for regular full-time employees to fifteen dollars an hour. As a result of that increase, seven hundred and fourteen employees received compression adjustments additionally, with the minimum pay rate increase and the average increase for those compression adjustments was roughly, well, exactly twenty point seven percent. All of these adjustments, including the four percent increase for classified staff, as well as the move to the fifteen dollar minimum, all took effect in July one of twenty twenty-one. So this, now we're shifting to our teacher scales. If you go to the next slide, please, sorry. In this presentation, we're going to really focus on our master's degree-based scales. We're seeing an increasing number of our collegiate programs provide master's degrees upon graduation, and therefore, our, most of our novice applicants also come to us with a master's degree. It is worth noting, however, that a critical aspect of our bachelor's scale is that a new teacher with a bachelor's degree does have a starting salary of less than fifty thousand dollars per year. So just, just, just worth noting. So when we analyze our adopted market, we are meeting the top, we're meeting the target of the top twenty-five percent, except for the thirty-year point. So you'll see along the bottom row here, all of those percentages are in the positive, except when you get to the thirty-year mark. We're just slightly above for new teachers in twenty-five years, although we do look at one percent or less as pretty negligible in terms of how we, how we fluctuate in terms of our differences. Next slide, please. So now we're going to segue into some additional research and analysis related to FY twenty-two's compensation efforts and programs. A motion was made by the school board to review the competitive market focusing on additional benchmark criteria. The research was completed utilizing benchmarks such as the division's commitment to equity and its mission, strategy, and operations. Also considered was school enrollment size, the number of schools, student demographics, the percentage of students participating in free reduced lunch programs, student demographics, budgetary expenditures per student, average graduation rate, local composite index, and also we focus on those localities in close proximity to Albemarle, otherwise known as our adjacent localities. Next slide, please. So revisiting the board's request to benchmark, focusing on the criteria from the last slide, our research identified ten localities deemed to be similar. Four of those localities, worth noting, are not in our adopted market, and we also added in Charlottesville City Schools to this information as well, based on their closeness and proximity. We've identified this group of localities also as our new metrics market. Maintaining consistency with our overall strategy, you can see how the ACPS measures when we target the upper quartile. You see that on the bottom rows there. We are competitive at the zero step, but subsequent five-year increments, we are behind this more focused market. Again, as we identify that as the new metrics market. You can go to the next slide, please, and I believe I'm going to hand it back to Mr. Redding.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Downs. So these data points and this information leads us to conclude that there's some short-range immediate recommendations, some middle-range recommendations for the FY twenty-twenty-three budget, and then some longer-term recommendations to consider for compensation and policy around compensation. In the short run, some immediate things that are taking place, we have posted, and actually, some principals have already submitted to hire. They're moving very quickly on this for full-time substitutes. A point three-three or a third of a full-time TA has been allocated to every school that's been converted to be a full-time substitute teacher. That teacher will report to that school every single day and fill in for any unfilled positions where coverage might be needed to support student learning. So that will, that is one strategy that should address substitute shortages and support our teachers as there will be less straw on them to fill in when, when jobs are not filled. We are also moving forward with the advertisement of, and we're working to hire a substitute coordinator. And this individual will be a full-time position in human resources devoted to recruiting, training, and really supporting the overall employment lifecycle of our substitute teachers. They'll manage the substitute program frontline and really support us in addressing the shortage of substitutes right now and ensuring that our substitutes maintain high-quality services going forward. In the longer term, this position will also take on responsibility for other temporary employees. So substitute bus drivers and positions like that. Finally, we're recommending a substitute rate adjustment in order to be able to be highly competitive with our neighboring jurisdictions and also entice individuals to fill those positions for us. Beginning right there, at the beginning of March, we're also going to recommend a four percent market adjustment for teachers and classified staff. And that will address some of those data points that you saw that Mr. Downs has just shared. In the medium range for next year's fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget, we're looking at some targeted pay increases and really in some very specific areas, some of which we've already talked about, our trades areas, our nurses, our technology employees, and some of those areas where we're not as market competitive. And then we also really want to look at other positions that we're having a hard time filling and consider pay adjustments that will, or market rate adjustments that will enable us to keep those positions fully staffed. We're also recommending that those full-time substitutes be funded in the budget going forward so that that will be a permanent support for our schools to fill those vacancies, those positions that don't get filled by a substitute. Within that budget, there will be a recommendation coming also for an additional market adjustment for both teachers and classified staff. And that's really around addressing our competition within our market and as well as the cost of living here as we really work to attract and retain the very best talent among our teachers, our administrators, and our classified staff to serve our students and our families. Our long-range strategy is to really consider our philosophy around compensation and the strategy that we're going to employ going forward. Looking at the strategy we use currently and have used for a number of years and looking at the marketplace, our vacancies and our fill rates as we move into a more normal school year and see, do we want to make adjustments to that philosophy? And then considering a compensation study for positions to see where are we out of market and who should we be comparing ourselves to? Is it other school divisions and what other employers do we really want to be looking at for classified positions? That will be our long-term strategy for compensation. And with that, I'm going to turn it back to Dr. Kaiser.
Thank you. One of the things that we found very interesting as we were really taking a deeper dive into the, the adopted market and seeing if there was a, you know, what we looked like as we compared to other markets, what we realized is that the market itself may not have as much of a, of an impact on our, our compensation and where we, where we stay in relation to the, to various school divisions that we are comparing ourselves against and with and, and competing against and with for the talent that is out there. And so as we think about workforce stabilization, one of the things that we started thinking about is it may not so much be the market that might be the, the thing that seems to sometimes hold us back a little bit, but maybe it is the strategy that we use. And so what this chart shows is just a little bit of where we stand in, within a number of ways to look at this. So if you take a look first at this purple line, the purple line is Almaral County Public Schools Teachers Master's Degree Scale for the current school year. When we think about the, the current market that we, that we have with our strategy of being in the, in the top part of that market, what you'll see is in this, look at my colors here, the darker line here has a, the starting right together. And then as it goes up, you'll see, you know, we, we separate out from it a little bit and then come back into that twenty-five percent of our current adopted market. So we, we kind of stay together, we separate, and then we come back. When you look at the, the green line, we, that's, you see towards the bottom, that line represents the, where we stand in the upper quartile when compared with our adjacent localities. And when you look at us in respect to that, you'll see that there's, there's a pretty good gap, and we really do stay above our adjacent localities basically all the way through the scales. And then five, I, the other line that I wanted to make sure that you took a look at was the blue line that you see right at the top, and that is our top bay, our top paying contiguous locality for the current school year. The orange line is an interesting one because we started thinking about, you know, what would a different, what could potentially a different strategy look like? And so we, we started thinking about that potential four percent market increase at the mid-year. And what that equates to is basically the top ten percent of our current market. And so that orange line that you see there really does, it takes us above where we are, where, where we currently are and brings us closer to our top paying contiguous locality. And we bring this up really as a means to start thinking about what is, you know, our, the compensation strategy that we have had, we've used for a number of years, and it really may be time to, to take a look at that, especially when you consider the current market and workforce and, and the current needs of the school division and the competition around us. And so that is really one of the things that drove the recommendation for the, a longer-term compensation program and analysis there. So we thought that this was an interesting chart to put in front of you just to see the, the combination and the connection between all of them. So I'm going to pause there for a moment and see if anybody has any questions before we jump into the actual breakout sessions for this evening.
Dr. Kaiser, I did have a question about just the previous slide. Is Charlottesville not considered to be adjacent?
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing you. Can you repeat it?
Sorry. Is Charlottesville not considered to be adjacent?
They are. They are, they are actually, they're, they are part of that adjacent group. group, but the the there are other adjacent localities and that's what makes the, while they are the highest paid in there. That's why the gap is there. Everybody else is pretty significantly below. They are our largest contiguous competitor, though.
Thank you.
To the blue line at the top, that's Charlottesville.
Doctor Kaiser, the orange line for the top ten percent, that is using our old market basket. So we don't have the the data for new metric. I mean, I was very keen on looking at a different market basket.
Yes.
And I'm also generally in favor of why are we okay with being seventy five percentile within whatever market basket?
Absolutely. And and we don't want to be seventy five percent in anything else. So why are we pegging it at seventy five percent? Right. And it's interesting when we, when we looked at that kind of that new metrics market, that really was a kind of a and identified new market that we could look at based on the the study that was done. Looking at a variety of different metrics and looking at school divisions that are similar to us in in many different ways, whether it was size and or student enrollment, student demographics, L C I, cost of living. All of those were a part of that. And so that that's what that new metrics market really represents in the 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 where you see here is where we stand in our current strategy within that market. And so, you know, it really is a strat, you know, that's why we started recognizing that it's really the strategy that started bringing us down, whether you look at it in the metrics, the contiguous localities or basic or basically the the current the current compensation market that we're looking at, which is a much larger group of entities. And one of the things that we talked about is, you know, are we a small fish in a bigger pool or are we a big pool? A big fish in a smaller pool? And, you know, when you, when you compare us with the local, the more contiguous localities, we're that bigger fish. When you start getting into the, you know, to the comparing us to some of the larger school divisions, that gives us that ability to kind of challenge ourselves to to push our compensation a little bit higher. One of the things that we talked about is, you know, recognizing that there is a need to really take a deeper dive into that, look at the compensation strategy. One of the things that we we would recommend is is really kind of thinking about how we kind of can't think of the word right now, how we kind of recalibrate where we are with our salaries. So use this year as an opportunity to kind of get us closer to where we would like to be. And so then that way, any strategy that we lay on top of that going forward, we are starting at a different point than where we are now.
Okay, and Doctor Kaiser, the green looking line is our adjacent localities, right?
Yes.
And what was that line determined by averaging their pay?
Yes, it is. What we did is we took the at the, we took a breakdown of all of the different localities and and looked at where our pay is in, that's the average of their pay and then the where we are in the twenty five percent is related to that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Doctor Kaiser, it strikes me that we're kind of at a crossroads in terms of compensation. Whether it is teachers, whether it is classified staff, whether it's substitutes, whether, I mean, you know, I love the targeting of nurses and some of the technology people. I've got just a couple of questions and and the first one is leading because I want to, I want to ask a follow up one to it. What percentage of our teachers have master's degrees?
I don't have that number, I don't have that number right with me. I will say it is a vast majority of them.
Oh, it's a vast majority. Oh, I didn't realize that. Okay.
Yeah, and that's, that's actually why we chose to show the masters charts today, because that does represent most of our teachers.
Okay, that's, that's a great answer. In terms of of teacher compensation, I like the the idea of doing a four percent adjustment. You know, before the end of the school year, and I I've been forgetting what the timing was for it. Because that does lead us into budgeting for next year. Where, I mean, my my I'll say dream is that from a compensation point of view, we can catch up with our biggest competition for local talent. You know, in in the city of Charlottesville. And and, you know, maybe even take the lead. Because, you know, we've, we've been you know, at a disadvantage for a long, long time. And if we're going to be really competing in the pool and getting more and more applicants. I sure would like to take compensation. You know, out of the equation for for people going, coming to potentially workforce. When Mr. Reading was talking about the 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 pay amount for subs going up. It's currently at ninety seven dollars. What is the proposed rate for that? Is that going up to a hundred and forty? Is that going up to a higher amount, a lower amount? What's the the current thinking on that?
We we would like to, if at all possible, match what the city is doing. We know that we often compete for the the same people, especially within our urban ring. And so we feel that to make us competitive, we need, we would need to do that. The other thing that that would also do is we have a number of different substitute initiatives. For example, we have a different pay rate for our retiree, our retired teachers who who come back and sub for us. We have teachers and teaching assistants and others in in schools who are receiving compensation when they are asked to cover classes outside of their their regular work. And so as we push the the, one of the things I think is important to recognize is as we push the the scale up for the substitutes themselves, it will also pit put push up the the numbers associated with the others associated with the substitute initiative.
That's great. And and one of the things I know that I don't need to be be saying is that, okay, if we get it to the equal pay, then we have to have the position as to if the pays equal, why come to us?
Yes. Absolutely. And that's all, one of the things we've talked about with the the redesign of human resources is really thinking about that marketing and branding and and thinking about how we get ourselves out there and and really let people know who we are within Alamo County Public Schools and why they want to, why, why they should want to come and work with us.
Thank you.
Doctor Kaiser, what, what is the magnitude of our substitute teaching, meaning how many of our teacher day, what percentage of teaching days need to be covered by a substitute? Or I don't know if that's the right metric, but.
Yeah, so so tip, what we have found this year and unfortunate, I can get those actual numbers for you.
I didn't expect you to have them on the top of your head.
Yeah, but generally speaking, one of the things that we do weekly is we we do a snapshot on a certain day per week and really take a look at our our absences, our teacher absences and our classified absences and our support staff absences and some of the reasons for that. And we also ask that our principals to share with us the the number of positions that have gone unfilled. It's also a metric we look at in human resources. What we have found in doing that is that the the number of absences that we have in positions that we are trying to fill is actually pretty comparable to what it has been in 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 prior years, especially going back into the pre pandemic time. The thing that's different this year is the the number, the pool of substitutes. So if we have seventy five active substitutes, we probably really need about double of that to cover vacancies throughout the school division on any given day. And so what we're finding is that the it's the job pool itself that really pulls people down. One of the, while we, it's kind of a catch twenty two because we talk about those those full time substitute positions that we're looking to hire now. And, you know, we, but we're saying we we know that we can, we think we can get these people. But we also know that it's a really challenging job market and the and the pools maybe be a little lower than others. But what what happens with those positions is those people also will be benefits eligible. And so we hope that that will be enough of an incentive to have them say, you know, this is something that I'm really interested in. And and if they're not interested in that piece of it, we we really hope that the higher substitute daily rate will incentivize them to come and work with us as much as they possibly can. And and I I have to give a shout out to our principals. They've done a really nice job doing outreach to their with through their P T Os and and families and and messaging that they've done in their school division to try to get to people, try to kind of get people to come in and substitute at their own schools. And that has been very helpful, but it's still, you know, we, we haven't even touched the tip of the iceberg yet there. And I will say the substitute concern existed pre pandemic as well, it just like everything else. So it's it's very much magnified. We, a pre pandemic, we had about a seventy percent fill rate.
Thank you.
Other questions? Right. In that case, then we are going to give you guys the chance to discuss this in even greater detail. So what we're going to do is we're going to put you in three breakout rooms. And it will for about a half an hour total. We'd like you to take about the first half of of that time. And what we'd like you to do is we'd like you to really think about some of the things that you've heard tonight. Some of the recommendations, some of the challenges that we've had, thinking about competitive market, thinking about the the compensation strategy that we're using and then some of those, you know, shorter term, midterm and longer term recommendations that we have to to really help compensate our employees and and make sure that we have the best people here for our students. And so as you think about those things in your groups, we we really have two guiding questions. The first one is how do the recommendations support the goals, the mission, the I'm sorry, the goal, the objective, the strategies and the success measures that are indicated in the strategic plan? And then we also would like your ideas of what else we could possibly do to meet this goal. So we'd like you to talk about that for about fifteen minutes. And then after that, we'd like you to go into this protocol with talking about what squares with your thinking that you heard tonight, what questions are rolling around in your head? That's a circle and the triangle. What are three things that you would like more clarity on? And so what we're going to ask somebody to do from each room, we'll ask each board, a board member from each room to to kind of take some notes around that and be willing and ready to report out when we come back out. So we can hear the thoughts of each of the groups. All right. And with that, Ms. Johnston, I think we can go to our rooms.
Okay. If you are still in this room, you are in the main meeting room that is broadcasted.
Right. So our work at this time is to think about those two big questions. How did the recommendations support the goal? Objectives, strategies and success measures of the strategic plan? And what else can we do to meet that goal, to meet those goals?
Well, since Mr. Ober is going to do the presentation and take the notes, I'll I'll jump in first and say I I think that there's a lot of work that's gone into this that is very supportive of the strategic plan. I don't have it sitting right in front of me on, you know, on the whole thing, but but it just it just, you can tell that it's it's got great content and well throughout the through. I think that the things that can still be done to meet the goals. And this is going to be so broad because it's going to be, we just have to flesh it out. And and get a lot of the particulars, you know, that that we're going to need to do to go into the budget. I think that whether it's the nurses who I think have done just, you know, a fabulous job throughout the pandemic, you know, should be looked at for their position as well as the tech people, you know, for for perhaps special adjustments to compensation. I think, I think there's just filling in the the blanks at this point. That would be of great value to me.
I agree that the specialty positions of nurses and tech should be compensated in line with what what they're paid in in their field, but I don't I don't want to imply that they are more valuable to us than our teachers. So I don't know how you thread that line.
I don't know that I've got anything else on that on the first part. I mean, it's, it's, you know, the the part about what squares with with the thinking is that you know, most, most of it does at first blush. You know, the things that you know, that I mentioned before, that that's important to me is to get us up once and for all to compete with our biggest competitor from a pay point of view. You know, we've got a lot of quality here. It's with the teacher shortage, with other issues that we've been facing. This is the time to say, let's fix it. You know, we've been happy about the fact that we haven't faced the teacher shortage as much as other groups have. And I think that it's it's the time to to make these decisions. You're at the at the crossroads that I've mentioned before.
One thing it might be helpful for me to share, because I ha, I always have the strategic plan handy. It's just one of those things with me. But one thing that's different now than what we've had in the past is that we do have specific strategies and I think it would just be helpful, like, because the question is, how well does what you heard tonight square with the strategic plan? And under that goal of attracting and developing and retaining the highest quality staff, we say, we say that we're going to have a total comp structure that makes us highly competitive. So that's kind of what we talked about tonight. We're also saying we're going to revamp our teacher support staff and administrator performance appraisals so that they align annually with school and department improvement plans and encourage growth and support. That work is underway and we are piloting a new what we call educator performance appraisal this year. So that's, that's going on. We're going to research, develop and implement an employee services department that functions solely for Alamo County Public Schools. So you heard, you've been hearing some about that. And Dan, who's with us, is the first step in that direction. We're going to create a division, a marketing strategy that aligns with the new strategic plan. Haven't seen that going yet, but that that's something we'll be working on. We're going to convene employee forums to learn how work conditions can continue to improve. That's, we did that this fall, starting in October, and that's the survey that we just sent out is the result of of that work. And one other that we need to get underway is to really develop a recognition program. It's tied to our mission for our educators and support staff. We've never had that. And I think that it would really help people feel connected to the division if we recognize them for excellence. And we have measures. So the other thing I'm I'm really pleased with is that as a five year strategic plan, we're going to, we're going to monitor if we're getting better. We're going to increase the year over year number of highly qualified candidates applying for positions. So we want to reverse that trend that you saw. We're, we're going to have an annual improvement on retention rate. Develop an equity dashboard for retention rates. Have our new employee services department operational, that's our H R department. Decrease the number of unfilled positions year over year. Salary will not be identified as a reason for departure. And employee satisfaction levels stay ahead of national trends on our nationally norm satisfaction surveys that we, we are going to start using the Gallup survey to measure our employee engagement and satisfaction. And then the last measure is we're going to increase the number of participants in our employee forums each year. So those are all things that we're working on. If you heard, if you didn't hear something that you would expect to hear, because all of you happen to be employers or people that work with employees. You know, if you hear, if you didn't hear something, that's kind of like the next part, right? Dan talks about things that we could do differently.
Can you speak a little bit more about the recognition program other than golden apple? What what do we do? What, what do we do?
So where I've seen things like this work particularly well is you, you you provide resources to principals. It could be financial resources or it could be some other means to recognize, you know, certainly fin- financial recognition is is powerful. Also recognizing people as as a, with other kinds of awards that are public. And based and and the, the, the way it works is that you ask principals, department heads and other supervisors to identify employees that are doing work that's well aligned with our strategic plan, like our mission, for example, to eradicate our achievement gaps or those three goals that we have. And so you identify them, you, and then they're recognized for that. That's, that's pretty much how it usually works.
Because I know that we have some really excellent teachers who are experts in their subject area and are members of professional associations and where they could represent us, you know, at national conferences and things like that. And I'm hoping that we support those types of things bigger than just being internally recognized in Almar County.
That could also be a great recruiting tool to have a reputation to get out by the people who others see speak before them.
Do we support sending some of our teachers to national conferences and things like that when they are highlighted with as as great in their field?
We do, and so we have something that's called an acronym, of course. It's a PDRP. It's our professional development reimbursement fund or program. And so teachers can be awarded grants to attend conferences. So they can like say, I'm, I'm going to attend. They, they can earn additional grant funding to present and to share the work that they're doing. And we, we, I feel like we've always had good representation at these conferences. They're caught, you know, things like Ed Leader 21 and Virginia Association of Curriculum and Development. But I love your idea because recognition isn't just about like handing somebody something. Lots of times it is about saying, hey, you know what? That's in alignment with our strategic plan. But also you could really get out there and and share what you're doing to to raise the level for teachers across Virginia or across the country. So we want to sponsor you to go to this event, to, you know, to come to this event. And we're going to make sure all of your needs are met to do it. That's a great, that's really a great idea.
In my experience, that's usually money well spent.
Yeah. If I disappear, it's just because I asked Jennifer to move me among the three. No, it's nothing personal.
Yeah, for the record, you'll acknowledge our script.
You, I'll make sure I tell the other groups that.
Aside from the things we talked about in the presentation, what other things might we be able to do to to achieve those goals that were highlighted from the strategic plan?
You know, one of the things that surprised me the most in in your presentation, Mr. Reading, was the about the classified staff and the electricians and HVAC positions and, you know, really the, the work of, you know, retaining those people. And I think that part of the culture, part of a, of a brand, I mean, because I don't think branding is just about a logo. It's about who you are, how you do your business. And somehow in there, we've got to make sure at all levels, we're taking care of our own. And I applaud your, your, your thoughts on how to, what you're looking at potentially compete and and give them a real reason to stay with us. Because I really believe that it's, it is a good positive culture here. And I think more people will find, try to find a reason to stay than a reason to leave.
I think you're right. You know, part of our brand is you come to work here because you're passionate about the, the youth of tomorrow and being part of developing them into the adults that will lead in in the next generation. And we want that from all of our employees, but we are, we are more than that. We are a welcoming place. We are one of the first school divisions to adopt an anti racism policy. So how do we bring all of that into our brand and our identity? And and bring people into our employee family that are passionate about those same things and live those same values?
Did we think about working with K Tech any on and the skilled trades growing, kind of growing our own? And I'm kind of bringing them up, preparing them for jobs in the county?
That can be a part of how we grow our own, Grow Your Own program. With some of that initial credentialing through K Tech can then lead to on the job training, which can lead to apprenticeship, journeyman licensing and master licensing within those skilled trades and support to pass those exams. So that's one example of a great idea to meet these goals and close those staffing gaps.
And even to do that, because I think that's a great idea, Ellen, and is you still have to be competitive in the marketplace that they're looking at, you know, to be able to go after completion.
Yeah, because otherwise what we're doing is training them for someone else to hire them.
Right. Right. A competitive and robust salary and benefits package has to be part of the total, the total piece here because the cost of living in the area continues to rise and we, we want people to stay here for the long haul.
And we're not trying to get into a pay war. Quite the contrary, but it's just a realization that we are at that crossroads and one of the best approaches moving forward.
I think one of the things that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go, go ahead. Okay, what do we, what, what kind of information do we have on how people feel about their working conditions here? Other than, you know, the email, emails that we get from people about this, that and the other, what, what sort of real data do we have regarding that?
That, that's really our goal with the Gallup survey and the employee engagement survey is to get at that baseline data for Alvin Marl and have it compared to a national norm so that we can see how are we doing ourselves and how are we doing compared to school divisions and employers across the country? That will help inform plans for employee engagement as we go forward.
I think one of the things that we haven't discussed, but that is going to come up is the fact that AEA is working very diligently to sign up enough members such that they reach the 50% mark, such that they can collectively bargain. And that kind of addresses what you're talking about. That, you know, employee satisfaction will be represented by what are they asking for? You know, I mean, Alan, Alan's asking the question, what do they want? The reality is that through a negotiation process that we might find out that we're not hitting what they need. And that's why those negotiations can be, can be pretty effective. Because what we assume that they want, and I, the best example I can give, back in the, the late 90s, law firms in New York literally doubled their starting salary. The starting salary went from $80,000 to $165,000 overnight. And the big firms were still having a difficulty getting people to work for them. And they kept throwing out bonuses and it wasn't doing any good. Well, the reality is that the, the, the Gen Xers wanted time off. They didn't want more money. They didn't need more money. They wanted time. And so however much money you threw at them was irrelevant because they knew they were going to have to work that much harder to make the money. So they're going to have less time. And so I always try to caution people, don't assume that it's the money. Now, it may be the money. But I think it's dangerous to start from the position of, oh, well, we'll increase the money and that will increase satisfaction. Because my experience has been that that's not necessarily true.
Sounds like that's something from within the next section around one of the questions that you have around this is it may be money is one of the things, but what are the other things that we need to be offering our employees? That that makes this a place people want to come to work and stay? If we, if we look at the second part, some of what we're supposed to discuss is what, what squares with your thinking? And I think when we started, board members were sharing what they felt, what they found agreement with in the presentation. Were there any other areas we wanted to note? Hearing none, we can go to the second one, which is what other questions might you have? Then we had a question about employee engagement and how people are feeling. And that's tied to what other things besides salary, what working conditions are important to attract and retain our staff? What other questions might you have or might be thinking about?
One of the things that I've, it was traditional and most places have just abandoned it at this point. But was something that I always thought was an extraordinarily good thing for a public education system is sabbaticals. That, you know, after so many years, you're entitled to take a period of time paid to learn more about your craft. And it gives you, it gives you a mental emotional restarting point. And that was just typical in education contracts back prior to about the late 1980s. I think that's something that might really be a good thing for a veteran teacher who, because I know that we lose some teachers just because of burnout. And and they just don't have it in them anymore. But they're exceptionally talented educators that if we could give them a, a real break to re-energize, to really focus on their craft, they'd come back and they would be dynamite. And so I, I, I don't know how we would do that. But I think that's something that we really ought to think about considering anyway, to explore whether that's something that we could theoretically do. Because I think that you would have, if you gave people and currently we can give people a leave of absence. There's a limited number of leave of absences, but they're unpaid. And so unless you're doing exceptionally well already, that's not really giving them a leave of absence. But if we had some sort of sabbatical, a paid sabbatical, even if it was for a period of a month or two months, where an educator could go in and really focus on something professionally. So, and I'm throwing this out, but if you're a French teacher and you haven't been to France in the past, you know, 10 years, maybe it would be a really good idea if you spent two months in France and 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 really, you know, engaged and it absorbed that. I just think that that's something that's a little bit more outside of the box. But it might really speak to our, our staff and it might also recognize the fact that we recognize that they're tired. That, I mean, you know, our employees are just exhausted. I think everybody in the country at this point is exhausted, which is why nobody can seem to get anybody to, to, to take new jobs. It's because everyone, the pandemic has killed us. They just exhausted us. Anyway, I'll shut up.
You know, that, that raises a point that, that I'm sure, Mr. Reading, that, that, that you're already ahead of me on. Is that we have had a very large number of people retire because of the pandemic and 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 just as Mr. Ober said, just being tired. And 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 I believe that we also have a number of retired teachers who are subbing, or at least we were at one point in time. And I thought that we had, we had actually changed what the compensation is going to be for that in order to, you know, make that attractive for them. It may be after a certain point in time to reach out to some of the people who have retired, who are the real pros and who just got tired. I'm not saying that there will be half of them or a quarter of them or 80% of them who would have an interest in it. But there may just be some, you know, who had a year off, had two years off. And, you know, to Mr. Ober's point, they're actually missing what they're, what they were doing. And that could be an interesting place to find.
And we're missing that. Because when we we lose one of those educators, that's tremendous, you know, intellectual loss to the system. It's institutional, but it's also just, our, our teachers, especially our, our veteran teachers are really good at their jobs. And, you know, we can hire somebody who's new and they might have more energy, but it's going to take them 30 years to get the, the basis of information that the retiring person has.
And then, and to ask them, what, what would it take for you to come back? If you want to come back, you know, to Mr. Ober's point?
So, so one of our questions is how can we bring back some of that expertise that has retired? Potentially because of the pandemic or for other reasons? How can we find a way to leverage their skills and their experience and wisdom? And find a way to bring them back in to serve students and schools again?
And not in recent times, you know, given the last two years. But I, I could probably name eight to 10 retired teachers who are working in the community with kids in some way, shape or form. And who, at least three of them have said that they missed the classroom.
All right. The last part of our exercise is around what things need more clarity?
I don't know that I understand the question.
What within this, this presentation needs additional information? What do you have? Do you feel we might need to dive deeper into or bring other information forward to the board for consideration?
Sometimes I feel like we're taking two steps forward, one step back, or even one step forward, two steps back. Because I know that as a board, we've been struggling against this concept of, you know, our, our 25% or our, our peers and stuff like that. We, we, I think we've, we've all said at one point or another, that's just not working for us. And yet, the presentation kind of threw those numbers out again. And I get it's not something that we can do overnight, but I've been on the board for six years now. That's where at some point, if we're going to get off it, we're going to get off it. And and, you know, I, I, I think it, you know, it personally, it's a little aggravating when I saw the presentation to see us write back, well, this is the 25% and this is where our teachers fall. That's not That's not doing it for me and it's not getting us where we need to get. And so from my perspective, I'm tired of looking at that number. I'd rather figure out what's the number we should be paying our people. I don't care what other people are paying. What is the right number for us to be paying? As opposed to being reactive to other people. Let's set what we know to be the right thing and then do it and let other people catch up to us.
So, thinking about what other strategies are possible and how do we set this so that we're not playing catch up?
So that we're not being reactive to other people. We're, we're basically saying, oh, this is, this is what other people are doing and therefore we should do that. Well, I suspect they're doing the exact same thing. And if that is exactly what we're doing, nothing will ever change. Because we'll say, oh, well, we're still within the, it's almost monopolistic. And that should not be who we are.
I have a question for you, Mr. Redding. I don't know what the position would pay. You know, all in, but to work with 150, if we get there, substitute teachers. Is it, is it necessary to have a coordinator? Because weren't they pretty much working, many of them are working with particular schools. And there are some who, you know, can move around to different schools. I just am wondering if that's a, needs a 40, 60, $80,000 a year coordinator to do that. For, for that number of people.
I, I had the exact same concern, John. I, I would, I would kind of like to rather hire another full-time substitute. And, you know, let the principals coordinate within their little realm.
So with, with the substitute coordinator position, part of how the job description is written is to not just recruit and support the employment lifecycle of substitutes, basically be, if you will, an, an HR generalist for substitutes. But another piece of that will be to train and develop them. When we get substitutes on board, they might be extremely comfortable with certain classes and grade levels. But we want all of our substitutes really to be able to serve the needs of all of our students. So whether they are students who might be labeled as academically gifted, students who might be an English learner or have be a student with a disability. We want to provide training that empowers our substitutes to be extremely effective and successful with all of our students. So the coordinator will be responsible for getting that training set up and delivered and delivering some of it her himself to our substitutes. And then beyond substitute teachers, they'll also take on responsibility for all of our temporary employees. So that encompasses our coaches, our fill-in bus drivers, child nutrition and EDEP employees and other employees who just work for us on an hourly and as needed basis. So they'll be serving more than that 150 that we want to have as a substitute teacher cohort. It's actually a pool that goes, when you include coaches and other hourly folks, it goes into the high hundreds, 700, 900 employees.
I'm, I'm curious how we're going to compensate substitutes to do trainings.
I'm sorry, say that last part again. How we'll compensate substitutes?
Yeah, how we're going to compensate substitutes to attend trainings?
We could do an individual day during pre-service week. That would be a day of professional development for them. It could be assembling, training in online modules that they would have to watch or a blended mix of those two.
Are we talking, are we talking about the, the, and I, I, this is going to sound odd, but the permanent substitutes, are we talking about the substitute pool?
Potentially both. We'd start definitely leveling up the skills and abilities of our permanent substitutes. But then raising the qualifications and skills of all of our substitutes.
My, my, my point is that, that if they're not permanent employees, then we have to pay them to attend the training.
Right. Absolutely.
That, that is a budget thing that we should consider.
Yep.
I have confidence that there currently is training for them, but I don't know what it is. What, how are they currently trained? In our system?
I don't have specific information for you about that tonight. I'd have to gather that. There, there is not a large, central coordinated effort with the training at this time.
I would also suggest, and this is an absolute corollary and an aside, that to the extent that we're making them permanent employees, we stop calling them substitutes. Because the concept of substitute is can be considered almost derogatory. It's like, well, he's just a substitute. These are full-time employees. They're full-time educators. That's how they should be referred to. These are our teachers. And maybe we refer to them as floating teachers or something like that, but they need to be recognized as professional educators. Is everyone back yet? All of our groups? Yeah, thanks.
Great. Thanks, everyone. I hope your rooms were just as productive as ours. And I think it was really valuable to have the principal perspectives in there as well. So what we want to do is think about those three shapes. What squared with you and what you heard this evening? What questions are still rolling around in your head? And what three items would you like more clarity on? So if we could have a school board representative from each of the rooms, start by answering those three questions about the shapes. I think that'll focus some things. And I will ask Ms. Carlson to start since I know that we have some answers to these, some responses to these questions.
So what squares with our thinking? We're definitely think the substitute proposal aligns with our goals. It would make our teachers have more time for planning. It would allow substitutes to become familiar with students in school and build relationships. We were, we were happy with that one. We're also happy with the pay raise increases. We think that's on the right path. Questions rolling around in our head, a lot of questions about the compensation study and what that means. And so that ties into the third one, what things need more clarity, the compensation study, what's it going to accomplish exactly and what values it going to add? Add, we had a lot of conversation around how we've had compensation studies in the past. And in the end, we kind of have chosen what we're doing based on how we're feeling or various things. So we just wanted more clarity around that. And Kate was saying more about that. And then she got, she left the room. So Kate can probably articulate some more questions we had around that.
I was snatched early, but in mid-sentence, but no, I think you covered it. I mean, it was, if there is to be another compensation study, really engaging with the school board at early on. So the types of questions that would make a decision point for us, that we could articulate those early on and not be presented at the end of it when we might have some other questions that a consultant would not have addressed.
And that's all for our group.
Is there someone in the other breakout room that wants to chime in about your discussion?
Is that? Sure, go ahead. Okay, so what squares with our thinking? We were all in line with the overall ideas of compensation increases. One thing that we had discussed in the what else can we do to meet this goal? Part of the conversation was in terms of retention to think more comprehensively about the needs of our students. Seda made a really good point about, you know, substitutes are just a part of a broader need of, for the students and teachers right now. And that, you know, to continue to really concentrate on SEL and mental health will help basically make a better teaching and learning environment for everyone. So that, so that really made sense to me. And then also she made a good point about how subcoordination will help administrators concentrate on other duties within the school. I think that definitely, especially with like COVID tracing and things like that. I mean, I think administrators have been pulled in just a billion different ways. And this will help take one thing off of their plate. And I think that makes sense to us. Some questions that rolled around in our head. We weren't as clear between the questions and the things that need more clarity. So I'm just going to throw those all out. How can we close the gap with Seville and move ahead of other counties? How will we focus? What will we focus on in order to train substitutes better? And to, you know, how will we be working with them in terms of, you know, their development as substitutes? How successful is the retiree substitute program? I know that we've, at various times, really put energy into that. And I just don't know what the measure of success is for that even. How will we market ourselves better as an employer? I, I was very curious about what our retention is compared to other divisions, especially among different demographics and employee groups. So, you know, not just looking to Charlottesville for pay, but, you know, wondering how they're doing in their retention efforts. Same thing with substitute difficulty. If other divisions have the same type of difficulty that we do. And that made me curious about whether HR had a group of, like with Region Five with superintendents, if there were HR components of that where we can learn lessons from other divisions that may have been successful. And then I, we too had questions about the compensation study. What it'll cost, what it'll mean, what it'll do, things like that. Graham, is there anything else that I missed on that?
No, I think you covered everything. Thank you.
Thank you. And then from the main room, is there somebody who could speak to your discussion?
Alan, Mr. Ober has been dying to.
All right. You're letting me down, Ms. Osborne, in just saying that.
I did all the talking in the group.
I, we also discussed the, the the compensation study. I, I expressed my frustration that it seems like we keep coming back to the exact same compensation study. And for me, it's been six years. I, I, I'm kind of tired of the compensation study. I think we should just start doing what we need to do. We discussed that we need to look at, at whether, whether money, throwing money at the problem is, is, is going to be the most effective mechanism. That maybe there are things that, other than compensation, that we ought to be considering. And maybe we need to to better engage our, our staff to find out what those could be. I threw out the suggestion that we, we need to, to the extent that we're, we're hiring people to be full-time employees, we need to stop calling them substitutes. I, I just don't think that's a good way to term them. They need to be, be respected. They're professional educators at that point. They need to be denominated that way. It shouldn't be like you're getting the, the short shift when, oh, I got a substitute today. Well, these are, these are skilled, skilled education employees and they ought to be treated and, and denominated that way, in my opinion. I'm sure I'm missing stuff. But since John O and Ms. Osborne told me I had to do it, it's not my fault.
We talked about recognition more so than just internal stuff. We, we would like, you know, for those teachers who do fabulous things within their particular fields and have the opportunity to go places and be recognized, we would like to support that without putting too many hurdles in their way for them to get there, that sort of thing. You know, just various other ways we can recognize the expertise that we have.
And part of it was the concept of whether it's paid or whether it's finding out what's important to our employees or, or, or teachers or administrators or nurses or tech people is to find out what's needed. Mr. Ober gave a couple of really good examples of other needs that professionals have. And, and just take care of our own. You know, as I'd said in the classroom, in the, in the session, we're at a crossroads. You know, and, and it's, it's time to just do what we have to do in terms of compensation, in terms of, of many other factors. And, and lead the way. And this is a school division that has led the way for many, many years. And it's just time to move on to the next step.
Thank you. Um, is there any other feedback or anything you'd like to slide in before I move into our closing slides?
Just with respect to the compensation. I mean, we, you presented, it was presented tonight, a different group of schools that are our market basket. And so there's that, which they looked better to me than our, our old way, our old market basket. But also just pointing, I mean, what our market basket is may be informed by a consultant, but I think this one more closely adheres to where the direction we want to go to. But then there's also the arbitrariness of setting ourselves up for only the 75% tile as a, and, and our classified staff at 50%. Those are policy decisions that I think we need to look at closely because whatever the market basket is, we're, and if we say we can, we're satisfied with a C minus 75%, that's not as robust as I think we need to be. And it sends a pretty strong message, I think, to our, our teachers and classified staff that we're just going to put you at the halfway mark classified staff. I think that's a, that's a discussion we need to be having. As well as should UVA be in our market basket, particularly for classified staff?
All right. Well, thank you all for your feedback and guidance as we look toward making adjustments for both this year and then starting to develop that FY23 budget. Here are some key milestones or next steps of what you might anticipate moving forward. And on December 15th, there will be a reassessment update from the county for calendar year 22, which might provide an indication of our local revenues for next year. In addition, we're eagerly awaiting a, the detailed budget of the governor's proposal Of our local revenues for next year. In addition, we're eagerly awaiting a the detailed budget of the governor's proposal. So that we can begin to incorporate that into our revenue picture. In January, um, we plan to bring a back a more um. A detailed proposal for your action. In order to move forward with any mid-year changes to the budget that we propose to make. And as you know, um, after school board approval needs to go through the board of supervisors. So we're trying to, this is the earliest deadline. That um, we are trying to meet while also making sure that we address our needs soon as possible. We will also, if there's an opportunity for further budget development updates for FY23, we would provide that in January. Um, also around that time in mid-January, we will receive. Of the local transfer number that we will plug into the draft funding request. In February, um, the superintendent will present a draft funding request. That will be shaped by um, the process thus far and your feedback. And then also around that time period, the county executive will provide his CIP recommendation for the five-year program. Immediately following that, as we've done in previous years, we will have several school budget work, school board budget work session to talk about portions of the budget in detail. Uh, with a public hearing in March. And um, then we will come back with um, the school board's funding requests in March. So are there any questions about these next steps? If anyone has any further questions or comments, you can always reach out um, to any of the staff here or budget@k12albemarle.com or dot org. And then our FY23 budget development page is um. It's gonna keep every uh, keep all of the materials that are presented, um, links to the survey, those will be available on the 23 budget development site. So thank you all. Um, that's it for now, and I will turn things back to Mr. Page.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Kulisawa and Dr. Casa and Mr. Redding and Mr. Downey. Thank you all for your part in the presentation tonight, and it was very informative. So we do do look forward then to uh. The developments that will occur in January, February and March as we develop this year's budget. Thank you again. Our next item on the agenda is other business by board members superintendent. We will have a closed session. After this meeting, but is there any other business by either our board members or our superintendent?
I have none. Thank you, Mr. Page.
I'd just like to uh, make sure that the board is aware that Dr. Acuff and I are a part of the CIP meeting tomorrow. This is the third one uh, of three and um. Hopefully, a decision will be made tomorrow in terms of what the the proposal is for CIP moving forward. I think we're gonna have some more robust uh, conversations, but we will inform you all. As to what the results are, uh, hopefully in in a letter or some other format um, next week. Dr. Acuff, do you want to add to that?
Just to say that the the materials so far have been very conservative. And um, in terms of um, not including funding for modernization. And including maybe the, I mean, the high school center and one elementary school and very little else. Under the current. Conservative budgeting. Um, so we have been advocating more and we'll see where we get.
Wow.
This is over the five-year span too.
It sounds like a rehearsal for how the Grinch stole Christmas, right?
Sorry about that. We're working on it.
Wow, okay. All right, we'll look forward to maybe some better news coming within the week, hopefully.
Mr. Chair, can I just say something real quick? Yes. I think that that, and I'm speaking strictly for myself. But I want to tell the members of the board, the administration, how much I value you. I appreciate you. We're coming to the end of a very. Bummer year. Uh, and I know it has been hard on everybody. I really appreciate everything you guys have done. You've made my life better. I appreciate it. And I I'm pretty sure I speak for the entire board when I say thank you to our our educators. Uh, every single one of them. Bus drivers, cafeteria workers, nurses, teachers, principals, administrators. We are so thankful for what you have done this past year. We know it has been. Just a colossal challenge and I pray in the depths of my heart that it's gonna get better. And I also just want to tell our parents and our students, you know, we love your kids. Uh, we're so grateful for everything that you're doing. Hold the course, keep the faith because it will get better. Next year is gonna be better. Uh, and you guys are gonna be the strongest group of students. You're gonna be an amazing generation. Uh, and I I hope anybody who's watching knows that, that this this is a challenge, but out of challenge comes strength. Uh, and I know you guys are gonna be amazing.
Thank you, Mr. Ober. Here, here.
Here, here.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Ober. Very well stated because I think all of our board members agree completely with what you are saying. Are there any other comments from any other board members?
I just, yes, I would like to say and remind everyone that we have been circulating a school sign-up sheet. And I encourage board members to sign up to visit a school. I haven't um. I did great in November, haven't visited it in December, so I don't know how many slots are open, but I'm gonna go look for it. Um, with the hope being that in future meetings, we can, John O used to be great at doing this, just give little um. Updates on things that you learn from visits or so. Graham and I had talked about that in pre-agenda. Just a reminder, where the year slips away to try to get a visitor to him.
Sure. You know, to that end, I was in um. Lakeside Middle School today and Baker Butler. Uh, and with it with a quick stop off at um, Burley Middle School and um. Every single time I go to this to schools, I learn more because, you know, the 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 work that's been done in Lakeside with uh. Uh, some of their technical projects and uh. You know, gear for the daily announcements and for radio and for um, television. Uh, is is impressive. Uh, going to Baker Butler to see um. The uh, the, they call it the village, fifth grade village is what they call their learning cottage. And you've never seen a learning cottage that has had more enthusiasm going on inside of it. And last week I learned about uh, what Henley Middle School calls the Villas of Henley. And uh, they're they're they're, our educators are turning. Uh, what some people can consider to be negatives with the learning cottages into positive events. Uh, I'm always in awe when I'm in the schools and I encourage all of us to to keep going.
Thank you, Mr. Alcarro. Any other board members? All right. Well, again, that we thank David and Alex for being uh, in on our meeting um, tonight. And on behalf of the board, since this is our last meeting of uh, this year. We wish for all of those who are listening to us that this season will be peaceful and enjoyable. And our next board meeting is scheduled for January the 13th, 2022. So in relationship to the closed session, Ms. Vice Chair Carlson, do you have a motion?
I do. I move that the Albemarle County Public School Board go into a closed meeting as authorized by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.237-3711A of the Code of Virginia. Under subsection one, for the discussion and consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment. And the assignment appointment promotion performance to motion salaries disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees or employees of any public body.
Second.
Okay, move um, is uh, Carlson second by Ms. Del Caro. That according to all of those ordinances and regulations that she cited, that we go into closed session. Uh, Ms. Johnston, could you please call the roll?
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Oberg?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, so we'll go into a closed session. Thank you and.
Give me just a minute to get it started.
Okay, thanks. All right. I think we have everybody back. So I declare this session again, or this session again open for business. So Ms. Carlson, motion please.
I move that the board certify, I recorded that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing the closed meeting or heard, discussed, are considered in the closed meeting.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. All right.
I got it.
I don't think so.
Second by Ms. Dolberg and Ms. Lee. And we certify that we didn't do anything that the motion, original motion had stated. So again, so contrary to that motion. So Ms. Johnston, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Alcaro?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Oberg?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Page? Motion carried.
Motion carries. So is there any, is there any other business where I consideration tonight?
A wonderful holiday season, everyone. I hope it's memorable and safe for all of you.
Right.
Take care, everyone.
Love you guys.
Love you. Bye.
All right. See you all next year, right? All right. Thank you.
Mr. Page, you need to adjourn it.
Oh, yes. All right. I declare. All right. Well, part of the board has left, but anyway, I declare this meeting adjourned. All right. Thanks.
Thank you.